All the meeting, the order for the Wednesday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, April 11, 2023 work session at 6:00 PM. At the village hall, we've got Chris Moreno, Donnie Kern, Doug Lottie, Brandon Crohn, mind me up, Josh Heck, attorney under self-quest. We also have Bob Gunther. And I'm sorry, two and a half years. Sorry, John.
I'll cry myself to sleep.
I don't worry. Alright, um, with that, we can open up the public comment, two minutes per person, fourteen minutes per topic for anything that is on the agenda. Is there any, if you want, you can step up to the podium, state your name, please. Remember, this is for things that are on the agenda.
On the agenda?
Only on the agenda.
So I can't be not on the agenda?
Correct.
Why is that?
That's the further comment, that's only for things that are on the agenda.
Okay.
It's the the roadwork that's being done, is that part of this? Like thirty-five and very clean and all that?
Yes.
Okay, I've never done this before. For the forest, six oh two Raymond. So is someone gonna come show us how we're gonna get out and about from our homes?
Alright, so we learned about this last Thursday afternoon. We've got a lot of questions left unanswered from the DOT.
Okay.
So we were surprised by their start date because the whole conversation really was geared into a much later start time, so.
I mean, that don't matter, it's like.
There's a public information meeting. And that's gonna address a lot of your questions from the right individuals.
Okay.
I could guess, but I don't wanna speculate and then have it not be something right here.
You could cut it in half, quick trip through the CNN.
Right.
There's already one there.
Well, I'm kidding, well, no, it ends though.
I know.
What ends, okay, so we'll go to the nineteen.
Yeah.
Is anyone else?
I note that the agenda states public comment, two minutes per person and fourteen minutes per topic, it does not limit to agenda items.
That's typically what we've always done is just agenda items, so that's why it's listed or that's what we've always done, so.
Follow the rules, what's published is what we should be working off of.
Uh, yeah, yeah, normally I think it says agenda items, but if it doesn't, then it would be public comment on anything, just a reminder to the board. It's not a discussion time and not especially to, no discussion on items where they're, it's not on the agenda.
Okay, who started? Do you have a timer going, just so we make sure we're doing everything? Right?
Sure. I'll start it when you name an app.
So I, my name is Scott Gates, five forty second, five Second Street, Excelsior, Minnesota. I just wanna speak quickly on what occurred at the end of the prior meeting, the motion for adjournment. I happen to check into Robert's rule of order, basic rules of adjournment. The basic rules are that a board member cannot interrupt a speaker who has the floor, which I believe occurred, motion to adjourn must be seconded. And a motion to adjourn must have a majority vote. It also indicates that the requirements would be a motion to adjourn, another board member would second, and the board chair is required to declare the meeting adjourned. I don't believe that occurred at that meeting otherwise, other, either. It being that Mr. Kern made a motion to adjourn, that would be considered a privileged motion. It does give some priority to that. However, as I noted, under Robert's rule of order, it doesn't give permission to interrupt the speaker that has the floor. There also is not a roll call vote, and the chairman, I think I got that right, did not adjourn the meeting. I would like to encourage the board to request Andres, the village attorney, outline the actual rules and the status of that meeting. At this point, it's my belief under Robert's rules of orders, that meeting has not been properly adjourned. So I got.
In two minutes. Um, Andres? Did you hear that?
I I heard it, and it's not an agenda item, and and right now, we're not, we're not in the the previous meeting, a new meeting's been called. So there's gonna be no discussion on the substance of it, but it's noted.
Anyone else have any public comment online or in person, in person, sorry?
Do not see anyone. Um, and noted that oddly, trusty Todd Lee has joined me in the delay. Alright, next up, we'll go into community reports, starting with public works, discussion, the building inspector, update, or I guess actually Chuck can just.
Tony.
Oh, Tony, sorry.
And make sure. Yeah, we can unmute.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Hey, Tony, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So in the month of March, we issued a total of eleven permits, seven were new homes. We had one fireplace, one furnace, one commercial project, and one repair.
Are we all set with Gateway Building there on Aspen Lane? I know we had talked to them about moving the snow pile. That was on top of the storm drains. Obviously, the snow pile's gone now. I don't see that we had any issues, so I'm guessing they've, they're good to go again.
Yep, so Bob and I met with two homeowners right there, and I did address that with Gateway Homes. And also on Walnut, I made him put their silt socks out along the road. I'm sure I saw that, yep. And then, and then they're gonna put silt socks out around the storm drain as well.
What are you thinking? So my neighbor is already asking me, when do, they're saying July to have that sod in there, that's what they're telling him. So that whole, their whole lawn's gonna be washed into the ponds by that time. I think our new ordinance should give us the leeway to enforce them to have to have that sodded before July.
Did we adopt that new ordinance yet, or did you guys?
I believe we're voting on it today.
Well, not going on.
Discussion.
Okay. But we, so we issued the, and I, and and Anders might know better than me, but we issued the permit before you change the ordinance, so I think they would still fall under the old ordinance. Correct? Yes.
Well, I mean, they could probably be convinced into that doing the right thing, right?
Yes, I am trying to do that, yes.
Alright, good. Well, they they know it's coming down the pipe. I know I talked to Overeem. Um, one of the guys from Overeem, Clay from Overeem. Um, and I know that I let them know that's coming down the pipe, so hopefully Gateway knows that. I did try getting ahold of Troy. And he didn't return my phone call.
Okay, I know you had mentioned, or Bob had mentioned, that we'd like to meet with all three of them, all three builders. I think that would be a great idea, so we're all on the same page when it comes to all that these issues we're having.
Yeah, so I think between Bob, what do you wanna do? You wanna do you, myself, Troy, or Tony, whatever the builders, and is Chuck gonna do? Be doing the surveying, or are we gonna have the landscaper do that, or we'll decide that with the builders, or do we need to have Chuck involved? Chuck.
I think we just have one surveyor in there.
Okay, have them do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good for the update. We'll discuss that under the ordinance, unless you've got somewhere you wanna go, Tony, and we can possibly that up.
No, I'll stay on. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Next up, sorry, is the MSA engineer.
Alright, good evening, Mr. President. There are many things open here. So, first off, we do have the growing rates plans out for bids, bid date is now May ninth. And a little bit on a later on the agenda, you'll see Ted Bice's door opening proposal. But come to attention that there may be some bedrock there that we should know about prior to any sort of letting of bids. And so we're in the process of giving some sort of proposals, so we can put them in front of you for a decision on the, at your next board meeting.
How are we just finding out now that there's bedrock in there, or suspecting there's bedrock? I mean, you don't have a pretty, you don't know what's in there?
It, you know, it's news to me, never heard anything about it, but then when I was at the town board meeting, you know, Doug Ford has got some old family ties to the land, some of those things to mention that.
In the campground back there?
Yeah, there may be some concern there, and and again, just exercising a little reminder to caution, you know, it's, there's nothing worse than finding, finding bedrock or rock when you're not anticipating it. Because then they kinda have you over barrel, then you pay a premium. If we know about it now, we can, we can zigzag, maybe put the design, or at least include some sort of rock excavation type of bid item, you know, into the plan, so you can get on.
And we talked with growing wings, Bob, and they're aware of this, and they're, I'm sure they're upset with the delay, but.
No, it's, it's not gonna affect their schedule whatsoever. I mean, we're, we're on a path here, you know, they're not, they're not planning. Last I heard from them, you know, they're looking at twenty twenty four openings, so as long as they get built this summer, it's not that much of a work. So this isn't, you know, it's, this is not a big deal. I mean, it's a big deal if we find bedrock to be under the ground, you know, then, you know, we're gonna have some.
What is the recourse then for that? Yeah, you just move it to a different area, or that just becomes, you can only put, like, townhome?
Right.
How do you put the pipe in? Is that the problem?
Yeah, that's what you're saying, well, you don't want the contractor showing up and not having the right equipment, first off. Because then it changes the scope of the project, that wasn't in the bid. So a lot of precautions just to make sure, okay, we have some bedrock, you know about it, excuse me, so you need to bring the appropriate equipment. Also has some, some effect on our, our lift station. And betting that, so there's, there's.
Okay, alright, sounds like we should go through the, the.
Yeah, and we could always put in the grinder station, put it to the building, whether spaghetti, low pressure line temporarily, and, you know, work out how that area regionally is gonna be developed. Again, it's, hopefully it's not there as, you know, sufficiently deep that I don't worry about it, no problem.
I know they have applied for a permit or eighty for it.
Yeah.
A building permit.
And, you know, their buildings are on Slavon Green, you know, it's not gonna affect them like like it could be for, you know, we have, we have thirty foot deep structures.
Yeah, if we were putting a larger building out there, it would probably be good to know. Alright, that's all I have of the soil.
And I guess I get a little ahead of myself that is on the agenda.
Hi.
You know, we're, you continue to work on the Herman Dieter Steinbach improvement project. We'll have those ready for your approval. We don't have them yet, but we will let your your, you know, your, your warrant being.
And that's slated to be done this summer?
Yes. Um, comprehensive plan, then we will, we'll have the lead planner working on that, because now that that Todd's done his work, there's the actual, the plan preparation, that's our portion of it. And, and so in May, we'll have our planner on all the teams, I think, are meeting, we'll talk through the next steps and what, what needs to occur.
Have you guys read, you've seen the plan, how much of that do you think's feasible? Have you seen the plan yet?
Uh, you know, I wasn't present at that cap meeting, and I, we had a planner there, and my, you know, the two planners working on it are, but to be honest, I haven't done.
But they'll kinda let us know how many of those ideas are feasible?
Yeah.
From a cost standpoint.
Yeah, and then seek your direction, you know, what we, we wanna go in. How many subsequent meetings you wanna have beyond this point? Uh, because with, there's gonna have to be discussions about where to make it from here, since that scope was shrunk. You know, there's other things that weren't addressed that now we'll have to pick up. And so talking through how you want that to happen, you know, hold deep, but dive, you wanna go on some of these issues, we'll just have to figure that out. Waste water treatment facility, not a lot of work happened. I did have, I mistakenly had a radio, but uh, pay up nine out here, you don't have a pay up nine this month. But they are, they are out there working now, they picked up, and so you're gonna see a lot of activity out there. And be extra nice to your wastewater operators, because they're getting into the mode now where they start working out some of the process equipment. And so essentially all summer, you know, there's gonna be a lot of times, if not all the time, where they're gonna have to manually operate that facility. And there'll be times where they have to unplug one thing to plug in another thing, you know, pull the levers, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be a challenge for them also.
Bob, the guys are.
They got it.
I'd like to come down and at least see what they gotta do, so we know what, so we know what we're having them do, is it outside their normal training?
No. Processors are timed, and that's just the biggest thing, that we keep the process running.
Because we're shooting to have that tank up and running by the end of July. A large tank.
Oh, I remember, yeah, I don't recall the schedule there.
Because we gotta get that thing online, so we can fill it up, get the new bacteria in there.
But yeah, I mean, their, the controls go on, they're well prepared on what needs to be done. When it's not automated to the level it's automated.
Okay, well, Bob says we're ready for it?
Ready. Uh, Churchill Road, as you may have heard, that there's a pre-con on the, the seventeenth, and then they, they wanna have that neighborhood meeting at St. Anne's on the nineteenth.
And so does that essentially shut the bridge off?
Yes, more or less, yes.
Do we wanna start Kenland to get in earlier then?
That's what we have to discuss with them, but they're not, they're not being very cooperative, because we don't have a signed contract with them, and so, it's not a contract, we'll talk.
I, I, that's a good bargaining position, I guess.
It's understandable, yeah, so, and one would assume that, you know, if they have the manpower available, that they'll wanna get in as soon as possible, so it's logical to assume that they don't wanna get on this, you know, so they can get on to whatever's next for them. So there's quite a lot in there, and so let's, let's hope that is the case, that that, then things can.
Sooner rather. So the pre-construction meeting on April seventeenth, and then they're having a meeting for the general public on April nineteenth, who's all gonna be at the April seventeenth? Uh, we.
It'll be, it'll be all the stakeholders, I mean, the schools. You know, emergency services, DOT, and their consultant will be running it.
Which one should we go to, well?
Pre-constructions, a lot of technical stuff.
Like technical stuff, though?
You're more invited to go, you got the invite, so. That's extended to all of you.
That's virtual, too, right?
It is, I mean, we don't have to be in person. Or in person, it's a no-clar if you wanna drive to.
Yeah.
And I would encourage you to go to the public one, I mean, you can go to both, but, you know, there we said, you know, just to listen to what the citizens are saying, and you know, and and everything else, I think that's where your real value will be.
They'll probably have snacks at the public board, too.
Better coffee.
Is there any chance they can push that back? The, the closing of that, that intersection?
We asked. They said for, they, they wanna get it done this summer, they said they gotta go.
I mean, when I say push back like a week or something, because we trying to get that one ninetieth mill, you know, milled and repaved before they start beating that all up, I mean, otherwise.
Yeah, they got a lot of work to do, you know, from now until the twenty-sixth.
I mean, when I say close down the entire intersection, if they could leave a portion of it, you know, while they get everything kind of their equipment in and set up.
And that's how the kind of the sausage is gonna be made, where that's the discussion that's gonna happen on the seventeenth, and, you know, you know, this needs to be done, this, that, and the other. St. Anne's is under a major construction project, and they've got large trucks that need to get in there, you know, so there's gonna be a lot of discussion, you know, getting into some of those details, I guess.
Is there public input, or is there, is there input at the seventeenth meeting and the nineteenth meeting, or is there any input?
Now, from a public standpoint, per se, the nineteenth.
Yeah.
A lot of questions, no, the seventeenth, are you?
Well, just because I've had, I, I've had concerned citizens say when they come up over that hill, when people are coming out of church, or the Catholic church, that they almost gotten hit multiple times, and I don't know if there's gonna be like a sign with lights for there, or sticks, or there is.
I don't believe, there'll be a brush, like, okay. Radar for a couple of years now, since this was talked about, actually, before this was even talked about.
Yeah.
The project, additional lighting, so the lighting's gonna be improved at all as well, because it's very dark.
There's that kind of stuff to see people.
So, okay, perfect. If that might be something to you, and from the hundred ninetieth, if there's a delay, is that something as an option of going to laser and taking that around? While we finish that, that would probably be the only other option to do, to get around that at this point. That is our contingency plan, so, and typically, people from the local people, they're gonna find their own way, best way for them, and they're gonna follow the detour route. We just can't put detour routes on town roads. So we're gonna go where they're inclined to go. It's the, it's the traffic from all the town, and the capture. Um, you know, everything from, let's say, a baseball game. You know, last year all comes down to play a baseball game when they get here, and then like, oh, there we go, so, they understand that.
Is there an actual layout of the, of how that intersection is, and looking everything coming to the bridge, too?
I think I've got that on our YouTube page.
Is it?
I shared it on there, it's like in one of the lists, so thirty-five, and it's on the website, too. You got a whole.
Should be the five hundred and thirty-three, we got people asking if there's a roundabout going there, and I'm like, uh.
We're gonna need one at the, like.
Grand, I think that was the talk. Was doing the grand, the roundabout up there, right? Was that, that was the analysis there, you know?
So they are getting one there, and are they gonna?
Well, I mean, as soon as you wanna pay for one, they'll have one there.
Yeah.
I think we're.
So. Yeah.
I think we're gonna need one to get out of the range, because it's already a mess getting out of there, like getting out of work. And coming on SMC there, it's, you're sitting and waiting to take a left-hand turn for.
Yeah, then you come out there at nine o'clock, and there isn't a car to refill, so that's kinda like the differences will be.
And then the other places on one ninetieth and thirty-five there, or one, or Evergreen, some of those places, that's gonna be tough, that's tough to get out of some of those roads, too. Hope it's easy, good sometimes, especially if there's gonna be another subdivision over there. Anyways.
I guess, you know, just encourage people to be, you know, that, that first week of a detour is always a headache, to kind of smooth out some of the edge of it. I'm sure there'll be a lot of frustrations and people figuring things out, and then, then you'll then, kind of a, a little bit of a word, where he kind of understands that the headaches it's causing personally for them, and then adjust their schedules accordingly.
Is the township doing anything with Eightieth? Eightieth Street?
I'm not aware.
Okay, because people are gonna be driving on that to a lot, that'll just be.
You gotta speed or it's time to see there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's something in that row, Eightieth is, uh, yeah, that's my back, backyard there, and it's our, it's pretty rough. If you wanna give them.
But, you know, there's that joint meeting with the building board, the town asked me to attend that.
Oh, yeah, they might be, yeah, they might be concerned with the intersection stuff that they're.
I mean, that was one of it. But what Eightieth was one of the topics that they brought up to me when, when I was at the board meeting last week, so they're thinking about it. More along the lines of what are you that I do want, as opposed to. Um, other than that, yeah, there's a pre-con for Sixtieth Avenue, and, you know, same thing, but that'll be, that's a town project, they'll be paving that this summer, so. Sure, Matthew will be doing the paving of that, and the paving of one ninetieth, and then they'll be doing the paving of Churchill Road, so they're, they're part of this project, too, and so I'm sure they'll encourage that general, you know, anyone to, to work with them, a lot of them are paying one ninetieth ahead of any sort of closure, that's, that's our hope anyways. And, you know, if there are, I should bring up, too, if there are issues with Churchill Road and that, you can certainly tell me. But then we all have to work through the DOT's consultant, so I can't, I can't talk directly with the contractor per se. I have to, I have to route everything, so the DOT knows what's going on.
Will there be a contact person or somebody for finding that, at that meeting, so we can go direct to them, guys, so, you know, we don't have to, not trying to take, I'm trying to take a if there's a problem, if there's problems, like we're coming out over on, on, on our, out of our road there, by the, the association, you know, do we, you know, they say they're gonna give us forty-eight hours notice. I think it's forty-eight hours notice, or seventy-two hours notice, we're not gonna close down, you know, inner driveways and stuff, so we just wanted to get a hold of.
Yeah, the gentleman's name is Andrew Huntley, he, in core engineering, he'll go through all of that, his contact information. You know, the regular meetings are gonna set up, you know, all that stuff's gonna be at the, that public meeting, so you'll have all that information. And.
I think that was all on that letter that Bob sent out to all the contact information, that every property owner should get, that's affecting.
I'd love to know what your concerns are, so if you wanna see CV, you know, come on, that's, that's gonna be. Uh, maybe we have, have quite a few things, input on a few other items on the agenda, but I don't know, is there, is there any other questions for me at this time?
The only question I have that you had on here, and I don't see it on, on this, is, I was wondering, is, so you have the Main Street over Apple River Bridge inspection for the, set for September, is there a way that or is there a reason it doesn't get done when the bridge is closed versus having to shut down the bridge again for a little bit of time, obviously, to do the Snoopper inspection?
Oh, that will all be, I guess, it needs to do that mess, so, I mean.
I'm just thinking, if it can be done, and right at the end, before the bridge opens back up, can we do it that way versus waiting into September, and then we'll have to see what their schedule is, but that's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, it's a thought from that side, certainly. We just, we don't have a super truck, so we always borrow it from the DOT, so it's a matter of when we can get that, but if we can use the contractor's super truck, or better.
That we can get a good conversation to have with one, though, right?
Yeah.
We're in here.
Well, when that.
Right, right.
That's what, we're not to be inspecting it anyway, right?
Sure.
Same time, looking at the.
What do, I think you're asking, right, if, if there's timeframe that it has to be inspected by, is that?
Well, not necessarily, it's if we have it there, I mean, typically, it's just gotta be done on a yearly basis, and you'll have a little bit of a buffer window you can do before, and then it just comes back in the next time.
Well, every other year, because it's a fracture.
Every other year, not every year, sorry.
And fracture critical.
But it can be done early, is what I guess I meant.
Yeah, yeah.
You're good on your update, then?
I think so, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll discuss from the ordinance amendment for thirteen dash one, that's twenty-three, I foresee one, general site standards, sodding and seeding.
I know. That's supposed to have something?
I wanna say you.
Are you muted?
You're muted.
You're muted. You're muted.
Can't hear you.
That's that's uh that's happened a couple of times tonight. Um. Yeah, I'm uh I had a discussion uh with uh Brandon. And Todd, just to go over what they were looking for in terms of a potential ordinance and I'm working on that and we'll have it to the board. Uh hopefully for uh a week from today.
Okay, sounds good, yeah, I think.
That's the one that we originally looked at, right?
Uh, it's gonna have the grass.
There's two of them, man.
Yeah, it's got it's got two, we included the grass, the seating within a certain amount of time.
Right.
And sod.
Based on the, based on the inspector's recommendations.
Yep, and then also the grading.
Yeah.
In order to get the um. Certification of occupancy. So, um, we sat with Anders and we discussed what we'd like to, we showed some ordinances that um outlined what it would see and. Um, he came away with it, understanding what we needed, um understandably, he's been. Busy with um stuff this week, so, um.
Was there, is there any thoughts we had talked about that? Uh encompassing of, you know, when they apply for. Uh their loans that they would or their their permits that they would be, you know.
Um, escrow.
Yeah, escrow, is that is that included in there too?
Yeah.
Yep, yep, escrow's included, Donnie.
Is there gonna be trees included in that uh seating deal like uh New Richmond or are we not talking about that?
I don't think we.
We didn't.
Yeah, we just grading and sod.
Be nice to get a tree or two in this town.
I uh, you know. I seem to recall there's another part of your subdivision ordinance that discusses tree requirements and like tree width requirements. Um. Donnie, if that's something you'd like me to look at to see if we can apply it in here, I mean, I'm I I'm fine with whatever the board wants direction wise.
Would you say you're okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I I I kinda like to see more trees in this town.
But I don't know, like he was saying that there is already an ordinance uh in more.
For the subdivision.
Subdivisions.
Does that require each each um um lot to have a tree on it?
That that's that's a good question, um my, you know, I recall this coming up maybe a year and a half ago. Where there was a concern about trees getting cut down. With the uh winesap Prairie Development, if I remember. Um. And so. There was some replanting requirement in the ordinance, I think, or we put some better definition on the types and widths of trees and the species of. Trees to create diversity of species. Um, and that might have, that might have just applied for the subdivision ordinance.
I would say I think we just start with the grass. And then if we feel we wanna add that, maybe we add that later, cause they're already gonna be up in arms that we're adding this on them already.
The grass is already in there, it's just a matter of requiring it rather than putting it.
Well, well, I think when I think the, I mean, the real purpose of this is. To try to get down established grass to eliminate um erosion in stormwater runoff. Which has been a problem that um. You know, it has been an issue with certain developers, unnamed developers in this uh community. And so getting that that seeding and or sod down, getting it established. Um, in an expedited fashion really does fulfill that. Uh, the trees are certainly a nice aesthetic component and can serve a purpose for soil stabilization, but um. Uh, I would kind of say it's it's like putting the Band-Aid on to stop the bleeding. And then if people wanna um. Do something to to make it look nicer later they can and you know, maybe that's something the board can look at.
Yeah, I think with.
I think we're gonna take another ball.
Well, so the the only thing, the only thing I want, the only thing is so. I'd like it in place sooner rather than later, because as this, as we kind of said, the issuing of permits, they get locked into whatever it is at that time, so. He already has the information we kind of need for just the one, so I think we try and get the ordinance through. So we can have it done on the next board meeting with the information at hand, and then I think we go back and add the tree, not saying it's a bad idea, but.
But correctly wrong, uh Mr. Help was said that you would be able to look at that and maybe, you know, put something out there for us to consider, right? I mean, it doesn't mean we have to consider it or, you know, put it in the ordinance now.
I guess as long as it doesn't hold up us getting put in by May, that's what that's what's important.
Yeah.
Or is the, I would like this in place at the next meeting for us to vote on and put in, because. If we don't start putting in there, they're not gonna do it.
I'd like to see it in advance too. You know, the meeting, not just day of, so the sooner we can get that language to look at and and you know, cause you guys have talked about it already, but. I haven't seen anything yet other than what we originally looked at, so.
Yeah, that was basically, that's basically what it was.
Okay, but I didn't see anything about retainage, there was, I didn't see any language on retaining.
Escrow.
Escrow. Yeah.
And we talked about that.
We did talk about it, I just said said I didn't see any language on.
Yeah, we have, it's not drafted yet, we just talked about it this week.
I'm guessing he's gonna probably try to get it out to us as soon as he can, I would imagine, right?
As soon as I get it, I'll send it.
We have a comment on drainage. Oh.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I've done this for four years and I can tell you that. I've heard and Chuck confirmed this, just about every major city and development. Requires a tree policy. Uh, the trees be installed as part of the overall development. That's part of the development plan and then with building permit, every site, every lot is requiring specific trees, specific calibrations. Most of the time I see two trees that are. The bigger you make them, better they're gonna be, except they're one gal branch, they don't last, if they're two, two and a half, they will last. So just about every community requires that now, that's a normal scenario, they require an escrow for that, they don't give us a certificate of occupancy. With some winter considerations, same thing as with the sod. Most of the communities now, and you guys may not because you're more rural, but most of the communities require sod, front yard, side yard and at least thirty feet or so. Of the backyard, so you have some establishment. Others might let you hydro-sneeze or something like that in the backyard. Um. Developers generally and builders will complain about it, but. We all know that it makes a better project at the end of the day, um and I think you guys are doing a. As built grading is part of your new ordinance, so prior to CEO, they're gonna do an as built. Grading plan, that's a good idea, one other thing may might be unrelated to this, but on the topic, it's rare, but it. A lot of communities now are going to a. Like a site plan review, they require the surveyor, once the survey is done, certifies the site plan that the. Once it's surveyed on the lot, that the house is within the lot lines and the setbacks. Cause it's a big, big problem when it happens, go back and fish the answers, so it's something that maybe fits in this same.
That you know by inspector.
Uh generally, you require the developer to have their surveyor certify once the survey is done.
Sure.
Just a simple form.
But the but the inspector would be the one that would be checking off on that?
Um. Chuck, you can weigh in on that, but generally. If the developer has a surveyor and you say you have to certify them, they reviewed it and said, we certify, you probably don't have to spend. The money for your inspector to go verify that, because their engineering firm has looked at it and said. It surveyed, it appears to be within the bounds.
Yeah, there's some specific clearance, somebody does.
But the the grading plan, the as well grading plan, that is a bit of an expense, but. You've had a serious problem with that, then people not. Following through on that and that should eliminate pretty much that concern. Um, it's gonna drive the price of the house up a few hundred dollars, but at the end of the day. They benefit as well, same thing with trees, same thing with sod, all of those homeowners benefit when you have a good solid.
The New Richmond's got a very good ordinance and, you know, has been developed and I kind of wish, hopefully we might be able to look at their. Their their ordinances in regards to in regards to that, because it it it's really kind of taken hold over there in the community.
Uh, yeah, Donnie, thanks again for the the suggestion, uh looking at uh your ordinances, they were amended in October of twenty twenty one, so a year and a half was. That's close enough to being accurate, um. But it was saying as a condition of subdivision approval or the issuance of a grading or building permit. The village can require replacement of significant trees if those trees were gonna get taken out. So what I'll do is just use that language and uh basically. Put in a planting requirement, um. To uh to follow the other ordinance standards for tree replacement. So I'll just do that maybe on a a per uh square foot basis of the yard, something like that.
Yeah, I just don't want, my concern is we're already passing. I I'm, I like to as graded and the lawns or our, that cost is already getting passed on to the homeowners, now we're gonna be adding a tree and uh. All this other stuff that has to go along with making sure that. Um, that can be done, so that that's my concern, um and I don't wanna be over burdensome. Over burdensome with regulations, because that is one of the advantages that one of many of our builders. Um. Enjoy here, you know, that's also they've taken advantage of us for some of those, but I think this this is a really good first step. Um, now, like I said, Anders, my my priority is just to ensure that we have this in place, hopefully something to vote on for the next meeting. So if we get to a place uh two days before or a day before, where we have something where you think it has like the trees, the as graded and um. Um, the lawn in there, I think that's good enough to pull the trigger for us to vote on something. And if we can't, I'd say if we can't get the trees in there, we leave the trees out, that'd be the only thing we cut. No pun intended.
Okay.
But I think it's a good step in the right direction.
Something's better than nothing. And you can always come back and. Alright, sounds like we've got that one kind of gone, so Anders will work on getting that information put together and sent out to the board. Prior to the next meeting, if possible.
Yeah, if you need any other, we need to have another follow up meeting or any conversation, Anders. Can we call?
You bet, you bet.
Alright, next up, discussion possible approval bid award Main Street Bridge expansion, expansion joint replacement and utility improvements project.
That's most. So, um. You should have received in your packet today, we received bid on March eighth. And London Construction was below with a base bid amount of. One point six million eight hundred. Eighteen, excuse me. One million six hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars and ninety cents, um as you may recall too, we alternate bid. Some fencing. Uh, the black poly fence. And that was all three of one for a hundred and sixty thousand or a hundred and six thousand. And also there was a a more decorative one for thirty thousand dollars, you know, probably thirty thousand dollars more. You know, at this time, we are recommending. You consider a word of the base bid plus alternate one. For a total of one billion seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, a hundred and forty two, uh, excuse me. And right, must be the heat, one million seven hundred and twenty five thousand. One hundred and forty two dollars and twenty two cents, you know, we did ask the contractor for more detailed breakdown. Uh, just to make sure we have a full understanding of. What bucket is suing, what bucket's water and.
Yeah, cause you were saying some of the posfer, someone like the sewer and stuff came back and some of the piping came back and.
Yeah, we were surprised about how how high they were and, you know, there 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 are some value, you know, there are some opportunities with value engineering, maybe. Alternate sort of the piping and all those sorts of things, but they weren't really forthcoming at this time, you know, essentially they.
Well, they don't.
Once you award the project, you know, we can talk about those items.
And they don't wanna go back and spend people's time engineering it, coming back up with it again, when we don't sign the contract.
Yeah. So is this something that we can do approve tonight or something needs to be approved next week? Tonight. Or, again, I guess you can make a recommendation, you need to uh. You know, we're still with them in the sixty day window. So, you know, you'd be making a recommendation tonight.
No, it's on the agenda as approval. Because of the the state project.
Well, the answer, I guess, the question is the alternative uh aspect there, is that something that can be. Set aside, we get the regular stuff taken care of or you gotta have it all together?
Well, the alternate is the fence that we had many discussions about.
Yeah.
What kind of fence?
We could for, you know, forego alternate one and and talk to them and see if they can. Paint it black, um. Like the one concern I highlighted is we just don't know that that fence and the support are past their. Um, used life, so you just don't know the integrity, if it's there or not, we don't don't know that unless we pull the fence out.
So here's my question on that. It's still in good shape, right? Or you are you saying it has to be replaced? I mean, it's lived its life, we know that. It's, we wanna, I'm wanting to know if it's gonna be able to live its life a little longer.
You know, it it certainly can, you know, it's one of the last.
Cause we're over, the only reason I'm asking is Chuck is because we're over by, you know, two hundred and some thousand dollars, you know, uh from what we estimated, so I'm trying to just try to see where. We can find some some uh common ground here, you know, I don't wanna put any of this back on the.
No, it certainly, it's it's an option, I mean. Again, it's.
That we could table it and maybe and figure out maybe down a road.
We can have those discussions, we ask with them and uh and. You know, you could just award it with. As the the base bid now and. I'm I'm sure that uh London would work with us if we wanted to put it back into the project. But that's that's only speculation on my part, I don't know why they wouldn't.
Well, yeah, I mean.
But, you know, if you if you feel strongly about doing the fence, you know, as a majority, you might as well just award it now so they can. You know, contract process contracts and, you know, get that ordered, cause it is one of the last things that they do. Right, and so. You know, as soon as they can get.
But that would give you time to talk about it a little bit more with them and, you know, I I just wanna get the, I wanna get the conversations going.
Yeah.
With you guys and see if you might be able to, you know, see what you could do on that, cause I I just uh we're we're hitting, I I we're hitting a little high then we. We can't be and and I'm concerned about that, so I was hoping that maybe you might be able, okay, you know, here we got a side contract and, hey, can we talk about this fence thing? You know what I mean? Uh, just to to keep our cost in in a little bit more into our estimated deal, does that make sense? I don't know.
You know, I guess I have like Bob who's got a, you know, if people have to.
Yeah.
Clean that off and everything else, you know, are you gonna get another twenty years out of it? That's, you know, that's the. The hundred and six thousand dollar question.
Can I be a change order later on, if maybe?
Yeah, but I, you know, I can't guarantee they'll hold the price, I'm assuming they would and if if we, you know, looked at other options and had that figured out. In two weeks, I'm sure everything would be fine, but again, I you know, I can't speak for them if we just awarded. Uh, I would assume that. That'd be a rotten way to start off the contractual relationship with the city of the village here.
I'm I'm perfectly fine with going with the, you know, approving the one point one million six eighteen eight twenty ninety, but I'd really like. To give an opportunity, you guys are sitting in a room together after a contract spending and give you a shot at trying to do something a little better on that. On that price, that's just my opinion, but um I I I. I'd like to at least give you guys a shot at it.
Well, I guess, here's a question I have for the hundred and hundred and six. Thousand, right, is. Is that in line with where it should be with the fences on two sides of the bridge? Is that something that's basically in line with what we should expect to be, is it only on the one side? It's on both sides and.
It's on both sides.
So I mean, to have that on both sides, is that in line with what we'd expect that something like that should cost? And we obviously, we know that there's construction costs for sewer and water and everything else. That is up higher significantly higher than. But is the the fencing, is that basically in line with where it's gonna be, cause that really isn't gonna, isn't gonna change if it is in line.
Did it come in budget? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, pretty close.
Yeah, that's why. And is the is the bridge. Fund that we have. That's going to pay for certain things that we're gonna do, right? Does that encompass everything that we're doing on the bridge? I I just don't know, but.
Certain water would be pulled out of that. No, that's. Fence, fence would fall underneath the bridge, it comes.
Yeah.
Well, that would eat that hundred and six thousand cost that you're worried about?
That would be under the bridge fund, right, which is. Separate fund that was established by.
Oh, I know, but my concern is having like the taxpayers that pay that.
Well, it it, we had estimated it coming about one, one point two, right, one point two, one point three? And it come in about two hundred and some thousand above that and would you put in the fence on top of it, now you're. You know, another hundred thousand above that, right?
Yeah, I mean, the bridge improvements came in more or less than.
Did they? Just the utilities.
Utilities came in.
So so that's not even gonna be part of that anyways.
Utility's coming about forty percent higher.
When we use, so let's just say for the state. When we use, so let's just say for the sake of conversation. That we pay for whatever portion of the bridge construction out of that account. Right? Whatever portion that account's gonna pay. What does that money do over the next five, ten, twenty years? What what's it for?
The repairs on the bridge.
Right, it's for replacement.
Replacement.
Or replacement.
Throw in money so that we make more money so that you can invest in a new bridge and. Down the road, yeah. If we had to put new, if we had to take the fence off at a later time, would it require us to shut the bridge down?
Yeah. Or flaggers, you know, that would be. There'd be some disruption, I guess.
Why would you have to shut the bridge down?
They've been railing under traffic.
Yeah, they really would all shut it down.
But shut it, but shut one thing down.
So you'd have more traffic control, so I guess from that aspect, yeah, you know, you. You could do it under traffic. The short answer. Uh, but because of the additional traffic control presumably it'll possible. So, you know, that that's the thing about doing it now is. You you're done with it, all the disruptions done. And cuz, you know, can you get another twenty years out of the fence? That's that's a lot to ask, you know, seventy years of the fence or sixty years or whatever it's.
My opinion would be we try paint that thing. In a black, dress it up and go come back. That that's my honest. Opinion. Wondering what it was.
But another another aspect of it is, okay, let's say we painted it right. And it only lasts ten years. So now that hundred and six thousand, how much is that gonna be in five?
While you're doing.
Is that gonna be two hundred?
You're doing anything.
Outside of this construction project, it's gonna cost. Substantially more.
So. And but you bought, but you bought ten years too. You know, I mean, I've got, you know, we don't know that.
Sure.
And, you know, if we bought ten years, we might have additional revenues in ten years that we could afford to pay for that, you know, so I.
And maybe you're, but maybe you're, maybe you're patching it.
I do like that.
You know, maybe you're just, you know, you're not doing anything fancy.
I mean, is it gonna?
Going and only gonna have ten years left in it. You're gonna just patch it and.
Well, that's the only the concern I have is that there's a lot brought up about the appearance cuz this is a bridge as it come into the town, every into the village, sorry, and everything else. And now it's a kind, do we not put it up? Do we paint it? Do we do other things? So it's, is that gonna look? Is it gonna be what we actually want out of it and the appearance coming into town? So that is just.
So you're replacing uh a galvanized chain line fence. With a black. So if uh if you're talking appearance, this is why I, this is my opinion. You paint it black, no one's gonna tell. It's all it's black. But.
But how much does that cost being that the river's right there? And like your overspray and stuff like that.
But that would get an opportunity to get that number if if you were sitting with London saying, hey, what's it gonna, what would it cost to buy? I mean. I I I'm just saying, we we you had a. You got a. Committee that kind of sat together, wanted to kinda do some things and work with rebranding and they, we all seen the presentation on that. And I, you know, if they, we were saying, listen, we're we're gonna hold off on this hundred thousand dollar thing because maybe you wanna do something. And at that point in time, I don't know, you know, I mean, it'd give them an opportunity to.
No, I mean, it's definitely a good idea. I mean, if you can make it last or.
So if you go, if you go through today and say, okay, do the base bit amount and award that. How long would it take, do you think, to come up with uh or find out pricing on painting what's there?
Well, we can ask London.
Say, do you think they would have information by? I was, you know, say within a couple of weeks or by next week's meeting, so the board at that point could take and determine what they wanna do. Yeah, if they can't next week, I mean, then obviously if it's within a month and London's aware, it is what you're looking at then.
They would be doing that last too, correct?
Yes.
So I mean, there would be some time for them to get their numbers if it was, you know, like you said, if we're putting it in like May one.
Or and maybe if we don't like London's price either, you just.
So uh today you at least just they based it up.
Yeah, that would be, cuz then we can get them going. Get their schedule and and get them out there quickly and.
Is it safe to say that we need some sort of a timeline to make up this other decision?
Uh, I think we'll just report back what we know. At your next meeting.
We'll be on the phone tomorrow and have some.
Yeah, but I mean, you could tell us, hey, it looks like they're not gonna move or I think we got something or you know what I mean by. By the following meeting, right? You'd have a pretty good idea whether or not they're gonna. Give you a thumbs up or thumbs down. I'll make a motion to approve the base bid on one point six million. Uh, one million six hundred eighteen thousand eight twenty. And ninety cents to London Construction Company for the. Project on the. Bridge.
First and second, any further comments or discussion? During none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
That might be a. Okay. Um, any opposed? Open carries. Alright, next up, discussion change order number four. Waste water treatment facility improvements.
So this is change order number four. Uh, the previous change order. Uh. Total a D got the forty nine thousand dollars. Change order four adds that uh essentially twenty thousand dollars. And it is for some pumps uh. The the operator requested a new circuit be added to the sub pump in the Edwards building and a new pump. Uh, with controls and wireings uh for the uh S P N R fluid valve. And then also there was some uh for uh for us, I see it in uh some typical typing. Uh, was modified uh to be consistent, the underground to be more consistent with the. At this point, we're looking for your approval of change order four. For maybe about a twenty thousand one hundred and seventy six dollars.
So that's.
A recommendation.
That's all that room gets. You can get the water out of the one room.
Yeah, so right now we got two pretty manual pumps, so drop of that.
That's got an explosion proof circuit on it, whatever, the reason why we didn't have an engineer.
Just because. Those small things were, it'd be really nice to have, so.
Those some pump rooms actually gonna function though.
There's no pay application on user. There were like a recommendation for the uh change order four.
Yeah, I think it's just a discussion, so it's uh I don't really have a. No real recommendations.
Sorry, so get used to the workshop.
Yeah.
My hobbies.
The only thing I had uh add on that is that when the room is flooded right now and it's of no use right now, so. It's just basically a tank. With a sub pump in it. Probably do it. Sounds like a. Ringing endorsement.
Both that idea.
Yeah. Open up.
Alright, any other discussion on that for a good discussion? Alright, uh, as discussed, there is no pay application number nine, so we'll move on to discussion amendment number three Churchill Road Utilities.
So this amendment number three is uh for instruction, observation and staking of the Minnesota's water and sewer. Uh, that's what we're overseeing. The DOT has a separate, you know, half million dollar contract with Core oversee the stormwater. And uh, you know, streets itself. And so. Um, you know, this is for our work and our documentation necessary to comply with that. Make sure. Your needs are met as well as complying with the requirements of the E M T as well. And um it's. It's a, it's an estimated fee of a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars, you know, one would hope that uh. You know, we'll work with Bob and his staff and. You know, and be as efficient as possible, but you know, they demand uh whole time respect and. Uh, inspection and so do you, quite frankly. So when stuff gets, you know, before it gets buried, we gotta make sure it's going properly and documented properly. So if there's any questions regarding it.
So that's for when the stuff's getting buried, so is that still gonna be through October thirty first? Is that just because it's also the sub going under the bridge and whatnot or? It's just a unknown timeframe because of weather and whatnot?
The reason I left it in that way, it shouldn't be, but we'll always have involvement. You know, there will always be questions that come up that, you know. The city had anything else, so it may not. You know, to. So it'll more like, I can't remember, I think it's more like on the first when all the utilities will be done. Uh, but there might be some tiki taki things over that, but it'll be substantially, we wanna assume, you know, August or mid-August.
You gotta estimate hourly or estimated amount of one thirty six, you know, how many hours is it?
Uh, not. I estimated it, it was a. I don't have it on hand here. I can get you that before the uh. Before the next meeting.
Please.
It's a nine hundred hours, I can't.
Well, just let me know. I mean, I'm just looking at how many hours we're looking at it here between May and October.
You know, we we looked at the amount of survey. So and a lot of uh things cuz originally we're hoping to keep it under a hundred, but when we went through the numbers, it was just like. We could tell you estimated a hundred thousand, but we'd be just coming back and.
You're okay, you're okay to come back.
Again, we we understand it's a significant expense.
It is quite a bit, yeah.
But.
I ain't come back low.
I can avoid coming back, I do.
Yeah, if you could please let me know what your estimated hours was, please.
Any other uh discussion on that? Good, you're enough. Move on to discussion twenty twenty three curb and sidewalk improvements.
That was funny one and even one. We had nothing for her.
Yeah, you know, like in my update, I basically told you everything to do, so, okay. More, we'll present the plans and keep your approval in a couple of weeks.
In May?
Nope. It's not.
Okay. Till next week.
The next week, alright. Time flies. Yes.
Okay, uh, next up will be the discussion tip five soil soil boring proposal. And on the same line, you put out feelers. So it'll be presented to you next and a recommendation next week. Okay. And next up is discussion power purchase. Mr. Gunter, so um. In your packet, so I'm in a conversation with the cat dealer. Um, just the plow that we currently have on our loader is a little. Mid wing plow, so it comes down in the middle of the loader. Well, when you articulate the plow, it likes to push on the plow and. Put the loader up on two wheels. Um, so Brian is our operator of that. Probably the most experienced operator and he's got some major concerns, just someone's gonna roll that in over one of these times when we get the curve. Um, and so I had a discussion with the cat dealer, so what are our options here? And the conversation kinda led to, well, we'll go on preview, your loader and we would give you more money than you. You paid, um, but. I don't think that's the route we wanna go, that loader's three years old. It's it's got some low hours on it, so I don't, I don't think it's. Economically smart for us to look into a loader, but. It's a metal plus plow. And it has the capabilities of, it's kind of a transformer plow and.
Belly mode, right? Part of a belly mode?
It's on the front of the plow.
Okay.
It's on the front of the urn, so. Um. This just quick attaches on, Richmond has one, Brandon, I think you said he saw it in action.
Yeah, that the last uh pleasure we got as well. Yeah, they work pretty slick, they're usually on the freeway.
So it has the capabilities of turning into a snow pusher, which would be really nice for downtown cleanup. Uh, it also has the ability to fold one wing in, so we're going by driveway approaches. We can hold the winnow back. And not put a great big pile of snow on at residence yards.
I'm okay with that.
Exactly. So that's the idea behind that. Uh, this is the proposals.
There's a lot of fact extras.
There's a lot of extras, just I just shared the communication between him and I because we were at one point thinking, well, maybe it is, we get. You know, additional, I don't know how many years of warranty on our loader, we'll get a new one and. But um it was something like forty five or something. Yeah, so really, I think to get us in a good position. Um, there'd be some expense to put. The plow on, it has to be, you know, low void from here to whole clear to their shop and and put on. We do have the opportunity to sell the other plow. It's not very marketable though, but. He said a little solid, this doesn't really work, so we'll recover some of that. I'm hoping we recover at least the installation and transport expenses. So really, I'll be seeking us for the uh, the forty two thousand dollars for the max plus. Yeah. Metal plus plow. Yeah, and this is something I know we had talked about this winter cuz I am mentioning a video that um everyone's probably seen it, but. It goes up in Canada and they had a um caterpillar and basically go by the driveway and put the blade under the middle of the cat would drop a. Basically steel plate, so that way it didn't dump all the snow in the driveway, then pull up as they went by. Dump in some like, is there something that we can look at like that? Cuz because of. The amount of stuff, I mean, we've all seen it, you get the three and four foot high aisles at the end of your driveway. And it's not always a young community, and even if it is, it's still hard work and a lot of everything else, so. I'm in the mailboxes even going by those if we can minimize some of that damage, so I think this is a a great option that. Even at forty two thousand dollars, which may seem like a lot, but I think for everyone in the entire village, I think it's. I think it's a value added thing that.
That's not gonna hold us up getting our other truck different money, right?
Right.
Maybe the best part about this is, I guess, it's it's already kinda factored in capital expenditure, we're just. Forlonging those payments, so it's not like it's additional money that needs to come out of the budget. Um, do I understand it right? It's not operational.
Yeah, it's just an operation. Can we move on?
No, no, it's not just discussion.
Good, perfect.
Thanks.
Your recommendation is for the forty two thousand for the the plow. Any other discussion? Well, you're here. Uh, next will be the finance personnel, a discussion of approval, posting of those positions. We have the uh posting around the review or we need to.
I would just like to get in. For the best as possible, um, in that may is is not that far away. Um, that I would like the opportunity for some cross training. With, if possible.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Brandon Chrome second.
Uh, first and second, any other comments, discussion?
We know we're starting or starting this position, or is it just upward and upward number application and you guys then, okay?
Yeah, I'd imagine it's gonna be more than we pay, no?
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposed? Open carries. Uh, next, public safety discussion, March incident reports. Lot of nine one one landos.
Probably that.
There's quite a few.
Smartphone, iPhone.
Mine'll, mine'll be on there for April cuz. You know, it's not on my phone yet, I didn't even know it. It said they couldn't hear it over the snowboard. I've been here nothing, so. Uh, yeah, I guess the only thing and Chris, this might be for you guys, maybe I can uh send a message to. Uh, you always, it wouldn't be bad to see us. And I'm not afraid of necessarily, but kind of a target, see if we categorize each how many we get. And then even if they did some sort of a charting over like a thirteen month rolling period to say. Are we seeing a lot more traffic stops or a lot more uh whatever calls? I mean, it just might be something visually to see quickly at a glance for people making useful.
But which officers issuing the most tickets?
No, 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 not that. Not my opinion anyway.
Okay, right.
So it's just a a thought, so if you wanna pack stuff on. Alright. Um, anything else on that? Alright, and that's, next would be fire rescue mark updates. Any good job scrap tonight? Think they're both the same as. Last year.
So it looks like we're getting tender in twenty twenty four, so we're on schedule to pay for that, it looks like, right?
Mm-hmm, no. Looks like they got recently opted upgrade.
Yep.
That's good. No cost, so that's good. Perfect.
Uh, next unfinished business, discussion, safety, security possibilities for tubing. Um, I guess we have this on here for any tubing companies that want to participate and help them. Determine what sort of things we can do on the river as tubing companies and as a community that they can help with, uh, with security. I don't know if you wanna talk it off.
I don't know, April twenty fifth, whether or not, how the judge rules, uh, whether or not we have a camping season here or not, so. Uh, otherwise, we'll do the same thing, but, uh, cameras, trail cams and stuff. At the exit points and put in places.
Any other comments or discussion on that?
I'll just reiterate my knowledge, um, rivers edges doing the same things that they've done in the past and expanding them. Um, there's a pulse complement, Amazon, the river with cellular capabilities. Um, those will be expanded for next year, there's discussions about adding some. Watercraft with some response capabilities, uh, for emergency responses. There's some discussion about improving access points. Somerset camp, for example, that will get emergency people into the river without having to find gate keys and things like that. And a significant, significant number of other things, um, they'll ramp up further their. Family friendly, uh. My events, you know, to follow the ordinance, um, that's been in effect for a couple of years here. Minimize the disruptive forces, um, the. Tubing transport will continue. I think it's Ben shared with you guys, but I'm gonna reiterate it, the purpose of the tubing transport, changing a fifty year tr- fifty year tradition. Um, certainly wasn't financial, uh. That cost a bundle, there's twenty kids some days working between both ends of that. And they're transporting two thousand plus tubes on a busy day. Um, the cost of that's extensive, but what it does. Is, you know, it was a mess for my experience dramatically for families and kids, especially trying to haul coolers and tubes up hills. All of those kinds of things. But the real benefits. Are not those, the real benefits are that by eliminating the tubes and the buses. We need a fraction of the bus trips, fraction of the bus traffic. Wait times have gone down to virtually zero, I believe the busiest day on the, like, around the Fourth of July last year. Wait times were fifteen, twenty minutes as opposed to an hour and a half or more the prior year. That might not seem like a big thing, it's good on its own, but the real thing that that is eliminated conflict funds. Almost all the conflict comes from hot, tired, angry, maybe drunken a bit. Revelers that that now are spending an hour and a half in line. And you have the opportunity for conflicts. That has virtually been eliminated, we have almost no conflict. When you put all of those things together, those were the reasons that those things were, we started, yes. Improve the customer experience, that's a huge part of the commitment of. A couple of the tubing companies, um, but improve the experience for the village as well is a giant part of it. There were plans to, you know, we've talked to you guys for a couple of years about. Expanding the use of Village Park for. Um, maybe some facilities there, and some improvements there, um, using the buses in Village Park. The experience of the last twelve months, we probably, I'm guessing, won't pursue this for this year, it's just. It it's a good plan, but it has to be done properly, it has to be done in an organized fashion, um, it has to be safe. I believe, my personal opinion now. That that whole thing has been tarnished based on the experience of last year. Steve might have a different decision at the end of the day, to build a trail. A safe trail up and around, no big stairs. Proper bus stop at the top, um, proper fencing loading, unloading, still makes sense, but. We'll see how it goes this year, I think it's something that long term is a positive. I know we've talked about with with you guys a number of times. You know, the possibility of being willing to, um. Enter into a lease for Village Park. Those are all seat related types of things.
Yep, yep.
Remember, some time golden problem here, but for lack of a better word. Look at spots, some things that people sit in.
Concentration can't cover.
Well, I mean, they do, if someone was there and they see something right away and can radio.
Yeah, and that's something, I mean, yeah, that are basically the ones that are there need to be taken down. I don't even know if many of them are repairable, I mean. I've seen some of them, and I know that there's like road holes through the roof and everything else, so. Whether the repair, that would have to be something that would have to be looked at by whatever property they're on or whoever's in the jurisdiction.
Sure.
So they used them one year in nineteen ninety nine. So one more thing, suggestion to you guys as a board, I know we've talked about it, um, the sheriff's department. I believe has a responsibility to provide service to all of its residents. Um, and at present, they have a huge contingent on the St. Croix River. I believe they patrol from Stillwater to Bayford, up two, three miles. Um, they have a sheriff's water patrol, it's a big effort. Um, I would argue that the Apple River. In the summertime probably has a similar number of people on it during, over its three months, and there's. You guys correct me if I'm wrong, but there's essentially no, there's a call presence, on-call presence. But there's no active presence on the river, and to me, that seems unfair, I mean, the St. Croix River has other assets that help control that. Um, I think it's great that the sheriff does that.
I was gonna say, that's based on a sheriff's decision where he he.
It should be, I mean, ultimately.
Chris, that might be something that. You know, for right now, Alaska, the do is to maybe reach out to the sheriff's department, is if they can come next month or something, if they're willing to talk about it. I know you were gonna. I did not get a chance to to get all, so, but if that might be something from a public safety side, uh, to look at, so if you're willing to do. I think, I think it's a fair ask to just say what's there, I know they're short-staffed and other things, but at the same point, it's. It's something that we can at least ask them for the that feeler out for.
And you guys as a board might wanna set a work session, a specific work session, get everybody on board with the. Tubing companies and all those guys.
Sure. Very nice to have something like that as a discussion for your upcoming concerts too. I, uh, other than knowing Willie Nelson and some other bands in Beestown, I have really, you know, and I'm I'm sure they they talk to you guys about.
Uh, not me directly, no, neither.
I know we talked with Joel about that before, about they they work really well, they have stuff with the county on on call and stuff.
I know, I know. As far as an agenda, but it'd be nice to see that as an agenda item to, you know, people are asking the question, how is things gonna be handled with the. Bridge speed boost and everything, so.
Throw around as an agenda, and the next one, Johnny, we'll talk her up.
Yeah.
And you can keep this on, you can add to it, you can do it every one. Um, anything else there?
Best question, did Chris, did they involve you in the meeting, in the security meeting with the county and all the cops and everybody? You're head of public safety.
Okay. Would Joel be the person maybe you wanna talk to about that in there?
I believe it's right near ordinance, the the public safety chairman. Has to be in that meeting.
I, that's why I was asking, cause I haven't heard anything, so. Okay.
They had that meet?
No, Duncan, no.
Yeah, no, okay. Uh, next, we go discussion facility assessment proposal. So when you're back, you have two proposals, one from Wool. One from ISG, both, um, facility assessments. But all their scope is similar, it is, uh, as to. They really trusted the polls a lot quite a bit, uh, Wool's kind of, you know, front back, uh, versus. But, um. Like, like I said, they're slow and their capabilities are are similar. Uh, the price is also very similar, so we have twenty four thousand five hundred from ISG. And twenty forty four thousand four hundred from Wool. Um, I guess my recommendation on this is if you wanted them each to come in and do a presentation with the board. You could ask them a few questions. Um, or whatever you like, that would just be a suggestion for me, you'll have to do that, of course. Definitely, like you said, it's kind of more of a sales presentation versus a. Here's an email, friendly email, not saying that one is better than the other.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
Were you at experience with Paul? Right?
Um, I I do with one of the workers at ISG.
Trying to find, I know we originally talked about this, and I try and find the email of the other one, cause there was two of them that I got. And one of them replied as ISG, the other one, I I can't be, he, I sent it over to you, you sent out something in, but I can't think of. I'm trying to find the 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 name of the company. But I I agree, if they wanna do a presentation, I think it's worth while with the incoming board on it to have a look at it. You, when would you want to do that?
I don't know that they'd have enough preparation time for the next, maybe, so it might have to happen in May.
May.
Um, I'll check with them, that's the direction that they wants to go.
Hey, Brandon. I'm good with either one. Good with either going, just picking one now, or I'm good with getting a meeting, I I think either way, we're gonna get the same product, it's a needs assessment, so.
We get a full board, full complement or board on on it, so. With Caleb and everybody on, you know.
Yeah, we can have it as a agenda item, that sounds good.
There's a table until you can get them in here.
Same, especially just cause it's so close, for it, pricing is so close, right?
One more, we are gonna have a lot to do, the new board, they get in here as far as. Activities that are coming up.
No.
Yeah.
Uh, next up, inspection community garden.
So I went up and had a conversation with the garden buds last night, I think, to Chuck, uh, with the garden buds and some master gardeners at. Um, the village hall, the town hall. Uh, their Pam is gonna get me, I think I got like ten people signed up that are willing to, um. Give advice and start working on a plan, so what I need to do is end up getting a mailing list from those folks. Um, and work with them to figure out exactly how many plots we're gonna need. And then work with, uh, our land, um, we got some land over by the liquor store that we can use. Then, uh. And then we'll, uh, so we need to have a size, a size requirement, so we can let them know how much we need to use, and then, um. Bob said we can get a tank out there for water, and, um. I think that this community garden is gonna be really good for us, I think. Community as a whole needs something that we can all work on together, um, especially after everything we've been through lately, so. Um, I look forward to starting to work on this, and I'm, um. I've given on my commitment that, um, we can get this done, so.
We also have land to just, you know, by Jermaine Street there by the church, and that's got a fire hydrant right there you could tap right into for for irrigation. It's a, no?
That's what I told for.
Hey.
Yeah, you add into that for irrigation, you can't, you can't meter them?
Well, you don't wanna be using them for standard irrigation. When it's meant for fire protection.
Sure.
Yeah, technically, it is, sure.
Okay.
A gravity fan, take, this works really good, that's what we have at the old town hall, um, there's fire access.
Then we hook on to them all the time, hook meters on.
We're looking at, we're looking at like ten, like right now, we've got ten folks, and I think maybe we'll have five plots, if we're starting really small. Not really super ambitious at this point, I'll probably have a plot, now do other people have a plot?
Okay.
Hopefully, um, if we end up making it community based and, um, we could have community based and paid based, cause that's what they have at the river falls. Um, river falls has a, uh, model based on that, um. It just allows us to open up for different grant funding based on if it's community or if it's individual, so. Um, I need to get, uh, the list of names from the garden buds, and then I'll probably start listening, I'll probably start having meetings with them, maybe down at the library and stuff like that, so. Might need some help posting for meetings and stuff like that, sure. But we're getting some traction, they're excited. Yeah.
Um, next up, new business, we don't see anything there. And lastly, our next will go into closed session, uh, convene a closed session as per section nineteen eighty five. One E, delivering or negotiating specified public business, uh, when our competitive bargaining reasons require closed session. Land purchase agreement with Montpetit Brothers and land purchase agreement with Capstone, uh, growing wings purchase agreement and developing greater. Get them, I will make a motion to move into closed session. Uh, any other kind of discussion? Hearing none, this was a roll call, Brandon?
Ready for night?
And they're all the eye, all in favor? And we'll go into closed session at seven twenty six P M. Thank you, everybody. Everyone's back in, that needs to get in, all right, oh, you're recording already?
Master.
All right. Here we are, uh, in our closed session, uh, we will take action on two items, uh, the first up. Uh, for Capstone, I would like to make a motion to approve the the land purchase agreement with Capstone. Uh, conditional on the village attorney approval of the environmental indemnification language. And the resolution of the soil condition report as determined by the public work director.
Brandon, one second.
First and second, any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Next up, I'd like to make a motion to approve the land purchase agreement with Montpetit Brothers. Condition of the, uh, title work and to proceed to close, I'm sorry. Approval of the purchase agreement and proceed to close contingent on attorney approval of the of the title.
Donnie, great second.
First and second, first and second on the, uh. Table, any other comments or discussion from the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
He's got multiple things.
Let's do this first, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second, second.
I don't even know.
It was me.
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, for adjourned at seven fifty nine.